Good evening. Welcome to Wilson Central School District's Regular Board of Education Meeting, Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent of Schools. At this, at this time, I just want to make the reminder, if you are not in the audience and you have a comment, question, or concern, please do not hesitate to call the district clerk, Mrs. Jen Pavan, at seven five one nine three nine nine, and she'd be glad to get the comment to the board or get the question answered for you. At this time, I will turn the board meeting over to Vice President Carlin.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the goodness of all, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Item one B, approved. Meeting minutes dated December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, accept the treasurer's report for November twenty, for November two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of fourteen million, three hundred twenty-eight thousand, seventy-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'll turn this over to Superintendent Carter for presentation.
Just, this would have been during my superintendent's report, but I see Mr. Roth is here right now, and I know he wants to get back to the varsity basketball game, so I'm going to jump this up a little bit. In light of the most recent injury to Damar Hamlin, individual administrators, board members, been asking questions and having conversations about our districts prepared, districts ready for, whether it be that injury or any type of injury. So there was a couple of questions that came my way, and I am going to do my best to answer them right now, but I also asked Mr. Roth to be here if any of the board members may have questions about athletics. There's a little bit of a division between athletics and then what happens on a day-to-day basis. So the first question is that I received was, are there AEDs? And we do have AEDs in district, many of them. We have one stationed as a permanent AED at the elementary school. There are four permanent stationed at the high school, middle school, and there are nine assigned to the athletic department. One is with the athletic trainer, and the others are with individual teams. And if you have more questions about that, I'm sure Mr. Roth will be glad to, you know, to answer that. All of our, all of our coaches that we employ, whether it be volunteer coaches, varsity, or assistant coaches, are trained on a yearly basis in AED, bi-yearly, every two years, because that's their certification, but we do the training every year to make sure everybody is up to speed on a bi-yearly basis in AED, first aid, and CPR. I don't know, Mr. Roth, you want to add anything before I open up if any board members would, you know, like to ask questions?
We covered it. I mean, we, we're lucky in Wilson because we have full-time training, a full-time trainer. So our contract with UV Sports Medicine is for one of those UV Sports Medicine trainers, usually it's Scott Denzey, but it could be one of the other people like Mike Kepke, who's here tonight, to be onsite for all of our home games, JV and varsity, which is a huge plus. I can tell you that that is not mandated across New York State, and that is something that when our kids go to other places, sometimes makes me a little nervous because, especially as the year progresses. So the way training services work, you either pay a flat fee for that training service, and because the pool of applicants keeps shrinking, the fee goes up and up and up. So schools are kind of pricing priced out of that, or they pay by the hour, all right, by the actual hour, and they pay ahead of time, two hundred hours, for example. Problem, as you could imagine, is at some point during that year, they run out of hours. So fall athletes might get a little more care than spring athletes, and that's how that works. So we were very lucky that Scott will travel with our varsity football team to away games, even when they're three and a half hours away. He will be here the best he can for JV football games, unless, like last fall, they stood on the same day, three and a half hours apart. So we did our best to manage that with football, but he is here onsite. State law says that an AED has to be within two minutes of an injured athlete. So we always are cognizant of that. So we always have the ones indoors, right, obviously, right by the gyms where our kids are playing, and then the coaches share nine AEDs, and the trainer always has an AED, not a golf cart. That's why you'll see Mr. Denzey or Mike Kepke with a golf cart at all times. Every coach has their cell phone number, my cell phone number, and obviously can call an ambulance at any time. So I think that's probably something that's really important to tell you before any questions, but I'll happy to answer any questions you have. It's a scary situation when you're watching on Monday night. Sure.
And a couple of things, you know, I was appreciative that Mr. Roth came down almost immediately afterwards and said to me, you're going to get questions about this, this, and this, and this is what I can tell you. So when I did receive some emails, I was able to, you know, give you some of that information. On top of that, you're going to see a lot of more press and all sorts of things. Usually when something like this happens, there's changes, there's different guidelines. We're cognizant that, you know, while our program, I think, is really good, there's always room for improvement, and we're already talking about, you know, if we had the ability, where would we, you know, where would we, you know, put more support in this, in this particular, particular area? Whether it be, do we increase the number of the AEDs? Do we increase the athletic trainer if we have the ability? Increase the opportunity for our daytime teaching staff and all of our teaching staff to be able to take first aid CPR. We have a trainer from Owen Bosse's that at no cost to the district, they can, people can be trained. We have offered opportunities, probably not as much as we should have, and that's one of the things we've talked about, is increasing those opportunities for any staff member that would want it to be CPR, AED, and first aid, first aid trained. We do have a, our safety and risk gentleman that we get from Owen Bosse's, Paul Nawaka. Paul is a first aid trainer through the Red Cross, AED, CPR. So we have the ability to be able to do that.
Yeah, so just to be clear, the coaches, you know, that's mandated. They must have CPR, AED, and a coach's first aid every two years. First aid is actually every three years, but every two years we tie into that class, and then phys ed staff also have to have that. If there was a school, they would have that link. But other than that, there are no mandates that I'm aware of, of other staff in the building, whether it be other teachers or support staff.
We certainly encourage it.
I have some questions. First of all, thank you so much for taking the time. When you mentioned a full-time trainer at our home games, JV and varsity, are you specific with talking?
No, all home games.
So even for all schools?
Everything. But there's a game, he's key or, you know, either Mike or Scott, you're onsite. They're not always at the game.
Right, no.
Sometimes he'll be in the training room, working with athletes. Sometimes he'll be at a football game, and there's other things going on. So.
But he's a quick golf cart right away.
Right. Well, that's what I was thinking, if you had to go from a soccer field and field field and the AED.
No, so at the soccer complex, they'll have their own AED. So let's just throw that out for, as an example, if an athlete went down or a spectator went down at the soccer game, and Scott was at the football field, they can still, number one, they're trained, administer CPR. They also have an AED there. All right, the coaches have their own portable AEDs, and they would administer CPR and AED if that's necessary, until Scott got there, which would be about ninety seconds.
So the coaches take theirs?
All the coaches, unpaid assistants, all have to have that certification.
It's new as far as. It's probably been since I retired, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's new.
AEDs in the building. And I'm, I'm happy that you're thinking about teachers and staff getting them trained.
Yeah, I don't think it's even that, you know, if, if, if staff members wanted to be trained, I don't think that would be that heavy of a lift for us to. So every year in June, specifically, I offer a couple of classes back-to-back during exam week for coaches. And if there are empty spots, so obviously because coaches are mandated, I have to have them take those classes first. So if those fill up, then I can't offer enough. But occasionally people will ask, can, can I jump into this class if there's extra slots? And we let them. But there's no reason we can't just say, you know, for two days, we offer, you know, staff members that if they want to take it in.
The major, the majority of that course is online, though. Just keep in mind, there's a, there's a section where the, the staff member has to go online, take the course, the first aid course through Red Cross, and then there's.
Staff members can take the first aid course.
Just the CPR and AED.
Yeah. So it would be different. The coaches have a pretty big online portion in order to get themselves to that piece where they can practice the rescue breathing and work in AED. I'm not sure that we would need coaches first aid for staff. I mean, we, by all means can do that. It's just a lot for them. But we can definitely narrow it down. And, you know, in October, CEDA came out with an EpiPen regulation, regulation.
Yep.
As well. So our coaches will get that at the CPR. So right now, really what the mandate says is that if the coach has an athlete on his or her team that would require to carry an EpiPen, that coach is now trained in that. They take a little quiz, online quiz that they work with a nurse. But going forward, we'll have all the coaches at that ramp, at that yearly CPR, AED class, do the EpiPen stuff as well.
And that includes field trips too. So besides the sports, does any of our students that go on field trips, they have EpiPen. We either have to send a nurse, or one of the staff members have to be trained, or that field trip can't be happen, can't happen, or a parent. We start, usually start with a parent. We usually start and ask if the parent can come, and if the parent can't come, we try to get one of the staff members to be trained, and if that doesn't, if we try to get the nurse there, if that doesn't, if those three things can't happen, we can't allow that field trip to go and eliminate a child.
I think that's a little strange, but our trainers who have EpiPen with them, EpiPen regulations, a little, it's very messy date-ish. Does that make sense?
Very top-down.
It has a lot of words that don't mean a lot.
And just recently, I would say in the last month or so, we, we had been working on it since pre-COVID, then things kind of took a back seat. The district was working on becoming an opioid overdose center. So the stage we're at right now, it fits into first aid, I was going to leave it in my superintendent's, but it fits. The stage we're at right now is we received our first allotment of Narcam. If a student, staff member, spectator goes into over, has shown signs of overdose, Narcam is available for them. We have it in all of our AEDs that are in the building. We're working on making sure they're in the ones for the, the coaches, and then we will, we will begin because then our nurses can start training staff and anyone in the community on, on that particular piece of first aid.
Yeah, so, I mean, right when this happened, obviously, the next morning, I went to Tim, and it's, you're going to get questions. Okay, right. So just make sure that we're, we're doing what we need to do to make sure that they're as safe as possible to come here. But, but I think in Wilson, there's twenty-seven people that are medical professionals on that sideline there. Twenty-seven. I mean, there's multiple doctors that, you know, are specific to certain injuries. So, you know, we can't, we can't make guarantees, but we can do the best we can. I've talked to, I've talked to multiple doctors, I've talked to EMTs, I've talked to a bunch of people. They seem to think, from what I've told them, that we're in a really good place, as good as we can be as a, as a high school. And, you know, so that's a little comforting, but we still saw it happen. So I can't tell you, I'm a hundred percent comfortable with every given of that, just by the nature of sport. You guys have any other questions for me?
I had just a couple of quick ones for you.
Yeah.
Mr. Roth, regarding, you know, talking about like access for trainers, medical personnel to like any home game that might be happening here. Without, you know, pointing out too many crazy circumstances or anything, one thing that occurred to me is that, you know, our grounds are fairly vast and not always right next to a road or something. So I'm curious if you guys have like gamed out any scenarios where you might need to get like an ambulance to like the distant soccer fields, or how you would get someone who was hurt out of there, that sort of thing, just like.
Yeah, so all of our fences are designed that they can open up for an ambulance. So any fencing that we have, we really only have two areas of fencing, but we can get an ambulance anywhere in there. If you look at the new stadium, they sometimes will park by the IT building, which will open up for an ambulance, that's typically where they will park. But I can also have them come on the other side, which would be by the concession stand. We can open that up for an ambulance as well. So one of the things that Kevin Sager, when he was here, we worked a lot when I first got here on an emergency action plan. So I have a pretty extensive emergency action plan for athletics specifically, and that, we talk about it a lot at our safety meetings, but it's, it's, you know, it has everybody's phone number. It, it's a pretty extensive plan, but it also has by site, which will tell the coaches, hey, like at this site, here's what you need to do. And obviously, since that time, I've obviously sent that email back out to the coach and say, all right, it's winter, here's the sites, let's review that and what's, what's just happened. So we do have that. We use the, the program that's, that's called Anyone Can Save a Life. So every other year, the way I do it is I, there's a little form that the coaches can get, and they just walk through emergency situations with their team. Once they've made their, their teams, the coach can just walk through and say, all right, if this scenario happens, who's going to call nine-one-one? Because the coach can't do everything, because it might be the coach. All right, so we have to have people that are put in charge of certain things, and then they just give me the form back. We did it last year, we didn't do it this year. I try to do it every other year with them, and then just give them reminders. Every year they get the emergency action plan, so they know what we're, what the plan is in case of emergency.
Gotcha.
And that will also be, you know, like crowd disruption, some sort of like active problem.
Sure.
Stuff like that as well.
Okay. And then I guess a technical question. Obviously, when things are happening, you know, on our turf, so to speak, you know, we have control over everything that, you know, from a planning standpoint. What are the protocols regarding away games? Is it totally the other districts' problem, or what, what, you know, what's our role?
It's their plan. Their plan would go into a.
Problem is the wrong word. Plan.
Yeah.
Much better word.
Yeah. And that's what's not super comforting, because everybody works differently, right? Like, I don't, I'm sure you guys in your jobs, you know, I'm sure you wouldn't want your, you know, your plan to be at whatever, you know, said school. I don't always know the emergency action plans for all of these other schools, but I know mine. So I know that any, any of these new fan kids that are here tonight, I know that they would be safe in an emergency situation. At that site, they have their own plan, and we would go with their plan. And I'm not there at that away site.
And so what is the level of communication between, you know, your counterparts in other districts and you regarding any kind of, you know, interoperability or, you know, coexistence of these players?
I don't know what their plans are, but to be honest, I don't even know what their site situation is. Like, I don't even know, it wouldn't even make sense to me because I would have to go through, I mean, not just the seven teams in our league.
Right.
I'd have to go through many, many plans, because we play a lot of different schools at a lot of different sites. So I don't, to be a hundred percent honest with you, I don't know what their plans are. I would tell you that they all are having these same conversations.
Right, right.
At their board level, at their superintendent level, this week, and hopefully it's not the first time they, they've had those discussions. I mean, we've had these discussions, I don't even know how, as long as I've been on the safety committee, we've had these discussions. We've talked about emergency action plans. I, I don't know what everybody's doing. I mean, everybody's in a different spot, and they're.
And I mean, there are like minimum requirements in place, or like what, what, what amounts of this are required, and what parts are you, we kind of going above and beyond?
You know, I don't know what the law states as far as requiring an emergency action plan for athletics. I guarantee that there's one for a district.
Okay.
But I don't know if that's broken down. It's just one of the things that was ingrained in me when I first got here, that we were going to go five minutes without me having one of those in place. So we've updated it throughout the years. I work with Scott Denzey very closely on that. I've talked to Scott multiple times this week. We talked about, you know, I've talked, I've met with Bill Atlas to see, you know, one of the things that I didn't think about in the emergency situation of, of Damar Hamlin is how did they get the face mask off so fast? Right? Because I remember football helmets a little bit differently than probably what the Bills wear. And I'm thinking, some guy's got to screw that, like, how did that happen in, in three seconds? But they actually have a quick release on both, the, both sides of the face mask, which our helmets do as well, and they can just snap it up. So if you're worried about a neck injury, a header neck injury, you don't have to even take the helmet off. If, in Damar's case, and we couldn't see any of it, but I would assume they probably took the helmet right off, because they weren't worried about concussion or header neck injury. They knew almost immediately his heart had stopped. The interesting part about Damar's situation is we still don't know the cause of it. So there's speculation, but.
And I guess my, my final question, I apologize for taking so much of your time on this, but my, my final question was just, you know, you talked about how home games are our responsibility. Now, off the top of my head, I can think of two sports whose home games are not here, golf and cross country, right? So I guess in those cases, are those kind of like orphan home games, or do we have, like, do we have to have a similar presence?
So we don't have a trainer there, but they both have AEDs.
They do.
Permanently with them.
Okay.
So those two sports specifically get an AED. Other sports like soccer, they will share, because it's JV varsity, and I have four soccer teams. They'll share one or two AEDs, depending on the, you know, how many I have at that time. But golf and cross country, because they're off-site, they always have.
And I mean, external to cardiac events and that kind of thing. There, there are plans in place for those sports as well.
So they're still, yeah, they're in the emergency action plan, just like every other sport. Really, the, the, if it's anything serious, they just call an ambulance.
Well, yeah, that's what I, yeah.
That's what they do.
Okay.
Because, you know, there's no other, there's no other in-between option like a trainer is even.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
And I have been onsite for cross country when a Dynakin went down, and we called an ambulance. I was there. I mean, we all knew CPR, AED, you didn't require that, but it was a, a big enough deal that, yeah, and then it becomes, you know, the coaches know for sure, like, that kid has to go to somebody. The ambulance, you saw, like, in the interviews post-game, or as they stopped that game, they were waiting for Damar's mother to join, because, and, and he's twenty-three years old, twenty-four years old. You don't want a kid to go alone. So the game will stop, I'll go in, at, at that time, and some Dyna kid, so I was going to hop in until one of the other people got there to happen. But we will do whatever we can to make that as safe and as reasonable as possible. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, guys.
We can do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Item two A, approved non-instructional substitute employee, Natalie Myers, substitute has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approved substitute teacher, Adriana Frerix, substitute has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, approved substitute teacher, Cassidy Geis, retroactively effective January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Substitute teacher has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Two D, Cassidy Geis is one-point-oh FTE, long-term substitute high school art teacher, per the WTA agreement, effective January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Substitute teacher has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Two E, Jeffrey Rogers is one-point-oh FTE, long-term substitute elementary counselor, per the WTA agreement, retroactively effective January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Substitute has met New York State fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Three A, student teacher Zachary Bischel from Buffalo State College will be student teaching in the middle school with Brett Sipple, social studies teacher from January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. His fingerprints have been cleared with the New York State Education Department. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Three B, approve the agreement between Art Park and the Wilson Central School District for use of Art Park main stage on Saturday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, for the graduation ceremony at eight AM to twelve noon. Graduation at nine AM. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Three C, accept the January two thousand and twenty-three donation of one thousand five hundred dollars from the Niagara Falls Bridge Commission under the direction of Commissioner Kathleen Neville for the Millie Neville Senior Champion Scholarship for two thousand and twenty-three, for a, a two thousand and twenty-three graduate. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Nothing under four. Five A, approve CPSC, CSC five oh four meeting minutes, and IEP recommendations dated January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item six, conference request. Approved conference request B through G per the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seven, conference reporter. Item A, NYSSMA Winter Conference Report presented by Claudia Andrus and high school student Nicholas Figueroa.
My apologies, Nicholas is cheering the games, so he couldn't make that. I just thank you very much for letting me go to this conference, as well as the junior high area all-state and senior high area all-state, all of which we cover. Senior high was canceled this year, but we had five students going there. Two students went to junior high, and they had one student went conference all-state, Nicholas Figueroa. Now, understanding that conference all-state is by audition, and it is the best students in New York State. Nick did make a comment that he, there was no one from this area. Everyone was from Long Island. Island, or around New York City, which is usually the case for music conferences. So I brought a little bit of the brochure, when we go, we get their Thursday late afternoon check-in, there's concerts and courses Thursday night, so there are workshops I come and tend, they usually run about 15 minutes, and there's concerts all throughout the weekend, different schools and colleges, Posd, Fredonia of course, but Downstate as well, and local high schools come in and they have performances all the time at the convention center. So Thursday night, all day Friday, all day Saturday, until afternoon when the actual conference concerts start, we have workshops. So I marked off some of the ones, like, you know, the ones I went to, the concerts I went to. Nick's concert was Sunday morning, so we stayed through. But they do have orchestra, mixed chorus, women's choir, vocal jazz, jazz band, and concert band, that are the best students in New York State. So I think it was a very, certainly great for Nick, and always good for me to learn something new. So I have this, and do you have any questions, if anybody's interested in looking?
Does he play or sing?
He's a singer, yes.
Wonderful. Wow, must have a wonderful voice.
He does.
Yes, it's always, it's always so exciting. So our kids, I mean, obviously our school is small, and they always go in thinking, I'm scared to death. You know, because you are, you're going in with kids from Downstate who have been taking private lessons since they were five. And so it's a little intimidating, and then great to find out that those kids are just safe. You know, you're all in different levels, and you're all working together to achieve something ultimately really awesome to listen to. So, Mr. Carter, you're a singer, you know what it's like to be in a giant group of all great committed singers. It's just a wonderful experience for new students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking.
Well, I had caught rehearsal short, so it's okay.
Mrs. Andres, which ensemble was Nick part of?
Up Next Chorus. Yeah, yeah, he's tender, he went in ten or one, so, which is nice, he's tender one and a half really, but it worked.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8, use of facilities request. A, Wilson Youth Wrestling requests use of High School Cafeteria A and B from January 2nd, 2023 through April 1, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. for youth wrestling. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No action on number nine. Mrs. Stewart, anything from those?
Just a legislative separate standard, and we're looking for the press.
Okay. Item 11, is there a report to be read, or?
No. Unfortunately, Madison's at the varsity girls' sock, basketball game right now, so she's actually gonna, she's gonna miss at least one, possibly two more, depending on where the schedule drops.
It's fine.
And item 12, superintendent's report.
Thank you, I did the majority of it before, so I won't go hopefully too deep. That part with Mr. Roth was supposed to be done during superintendent's report, and it could end up there in the, in the minutes if you would like it to. Our Capitol Outlay Project has officially been approved by the state, waiting for building permits. Once those building permits get here, we can start the bidding process. The Capitol Outlay Project for this year, if you remember, board members, is actually the, part of the auditorium. We have some sound, lighting, mostly sound items that we will be working on, upgrading speakers, upgrading soundboards, possibly moving the sound, some of the sound outside of that house. There's a bunch of different things that are gonna be happening. More than likely, it won't be the last time we tap the Capitol project, Outlay Project for this auditorium, because there are some things over the next couple of years that need to be updated. And last thing is, board members, as you heard just before Mrs. Palermo left, this coming Wednesday, the 18th, not this Wednesday, but a week from this Wednesday, there is the Financial Literacy Night from starting at 6 o'clock. Hopefully, board members, you are able to make it, whether it be as an evaluator or just listed again. Board members, do you have any questions for me?
How did we make out with the storm damage because of the?
So pretty much what I put in news and notes is where we're at. We had two, we had two classrooms that we had freezing pipes from the unit vents. Those were created by blowing cold air, they're both on the wind star, the storm side. Those two unit vents went down, burst pipe in a burst valve. The first floor classroom, which is the room we use for executive session, was flooded, along with this hallway and the classroom that was next to it. There's some floor damage to the, to that classroom, and some personal items that were in the, you know, in the process of replacing. The upstairs was more dramatic, meaning the water, when you have a burst pipe in the second floor, there's only one place for it to go, which is down, and unfortunately, that was into the fitness hallway, and that ceiling needed to be removed, and it now is removed, it is still blocked off. There's floor damage that will have to be taken care of, along with floor damage to the Mrs. Palermo's classroom. All totaled, we don't have an estimate completed yet, but our insurance company is on top of it. Mrs. Oliveri's been in contact with them, you know, it's, it's insurance company, so we pay a deductible just like everybody else, so it'll be ever, whatever the bill is, minus the deductible, minus the depreciation, minus whatever the else can get our hands on, and then the district will have to cover that portion of it, and the insurance will cover the rest. As soon as I have final numbers, I'll put it in news and notes. We did have to put the, I mentioned this in news and notes, but I think it's, we did have to put the generator on this building, because the power in the village was fluctuating so much. At a home, a fluctuation may feel like the lights flickering, maybe a little bit of a surge. In our building, the way our automated boiler system works is, when that fluctuation continues, it shuts the boilers down. So after three trips back to the building, Mr. Harmon and Mr. Richards decided to put the building on generator. We did get some complaints in the area about the noise of generators, they're not quietest generators in the world, but I've never heard a generator that is quiet. But I certainly understand the concern, but the concern of losing equipment was more than the concern of putting some people out with, with the noise. But other than that, I can tell you from what I've been hearing around the, the area, we fared better than most districts when it comes to what was lost, and what they have to repair, so we still have some work to do, and I'll, like I said, I'll keep estimates in news and notes. Anything else?
Is there anything we can do to quiet generators?
I, I can certainly ask, but I, I, I mean, the.
It's.
Yeah, it's, I mean.
You know, if there is, then maybe that's something you might ponder.
Yep, I can certainly ask, see if there's any way, any way to do it, and if it's, if it's doable. I mean, it's been a concern before, I would assume that's been looked at, but I can certainly talk to Mr. Harmon and see what, I mean, I was out, I was without a power at my house Friday afternoon at noon, and it didn't come back on to Christmas Day, so that was three days. And day and night, all I heard was, the engine of a, from everyone in my neighborhood, it's, it's, it's a, it's, it's not, it's not an easy, they're, they're run on diesel, it's like a tractor truck parked in your driveway. It's a, it's a large diesel engine that powers this building, and we have another one at the elementary school. But usually, they're not on that long. Usually, they're not on that long, so there, there's not a, you know, that much of a concern. But in this particular case, to save the electrical equipment and everything else, they had to be on.
Oh, most definitely. Thank you.
Anything else?
Superintendent, I have one question for you. Did our experience from a facility standpoint, or anything else for that matter, our experience as a district through this kind of unprecedented weather event reveal any deficiencies or areas for improvement that you think will, would be worth considering in the future?
I mean, I know, and I, I can tell you, Mr. Harmon, our facilities guy, I don't know if we're quite there yet, I think we're still dealing with the damage and, and trying to get that, you know, taken care of. He is a continual reflective, I haven't had that conversation with him, but I cert- I meet with him, meet weekly, and I'll ask him that question and bring it back to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. Nothing for item 13. Item 14, any member of the public that would like to make a statement to the board, please stand, state your name, address, and keep your comments brief? Hearing none? No need for executive session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.